Terry spends a lot of time and effort calling up friends and family members and acquaintances, trying to convince them to show up and vote for Biden in the presidential election. It's not that she's this huge Biden supporter, but when Biden becomes the Democratic nominee, she supports him. And when he announces he's going to run again in 2024, she still supports him.
But then October 7th happens.
Right. And then as the weeks and the war dragged on and Israel continued its bombardment, she really became very angry with her own country with Biden's response to the war.
Every human being's life mattered, but he diminished the tragedy of Palestinians by him going and embracing Netanyahu.
She really begins to think, that's it. I can't vote for Biden, not in the primary and not in November.
You want my vote. You cannot kill my people in my name. As simple as that.
How do you wrestle with the fact that that decision could help Trump win?
It's a very hard decision, but it is not me who's putting Trump in place. It's the president himself.
Jenny, it's really striking that, you know, four years ago, Terry looked at this exact same choice and felt pretty clear that to her, Trump was a worse option than Biden. But now she looks at the two and sees them as equally bad options. Like, that's a pretty remarkable shift, not least because, you know, when it comes to the Palestinian issue, Trump is much closer to the Netanyahu government on a whole range of things, things that she'd probably be pretty opposed to. So how does she sink that in her mind?
I think for Terry, she really sees not that much difference between Biden and Trump. She sees this as sort of subtleties that don't matter in the long run because of what's happening in Gaza.
This person hates me, this person want me killed. That's all what it is. I mean, I cannot tell you how sad and disheartening that I have to do this because that is the last thing I want to do, to basically say, I know I told you the last time Biden is not the best, but he is not Trump, and please, please vote for him. And now I'm telling you refrain because maybe, maybe they would start seeing us as a human being deserving of a living.
Terry really sees this election in very stark terms. It's not just about November. It's about the future of her party.
But when it comes to the future of her party, she's basically a single-issue voter, right? I mean, the Supreme Court, climate change, those things just don't matter to her as much as this other issue, the Palestinian issue. And she's willing to risk all of that in this election for that issue.
Right. Though I think Terry would turn that right around and say that it's President Biden who is taking the risk here. From her perspective, he is the one who is willing to lose the election over his continued support for Israel.
I am conflicted to the tilt. But my political engagement.
This evening's session, moving on to the agenda to Item J, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinances. Item 1, Petition of Appalachian Power Company to rezone approximately 3.255 acres from C2 High-Intensity Commercial District to I2 High-Intensity Industrial District located 1835 Lock Haven Drive. Catawba Magisterial District Chair recognizes Philip Thompson, Director of Planning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you mentioned, Appalachian Power is looking to rezone a little over three acres from a commercial zoning district to an industrial zoning district. The location of the property kind of sits across from AEP's existing facility off of Lock Haven Road. This property sits next or to the east of the Allstate Building, right adjacent to Interstate 81. So it's at 1835 Lock Haven Drive. It's again, a little over 3.2 acres. It's currently vacant, vacant commercial buildings that were on the site previously. They are proposed to rezone to I2. They want to operate a construction yard. That's what we've classified this use. And a construction yard is a permitted use in the I2 zoning district. It is not allowed in the C2 zoning district. So this is kind of an expansion of their current use across the street, that 1810 Lock Haven Drive, which is located across the street. Couple photos. So here's a view of the site. Again, there's a couple of buildings. It used to be, I think, a Jim Walters home sales on the property previously, and then these buildings were used for, I think, a photo studio. So you see the existing buildings that exist on the site, through these photos. And then this is kind of the view from that parking, from that lot looking west to the Allstate Building. So kind of a little bit of history on the property. It was owned by Jim Walter Home, Model Homes. So there's model homes on the property. They served as display model for prospective customers to tour. Then from 2010 to 2021, the property was served as a school photography studio. AEP acquired the property in 2021, and it's since remained unoccupied since that time. They've been working on a variety of plans for this property since then. Again, the existing facility located across the street was rezoned back in 1987 from B1 to M2. That conditional rezoning had proffered conditions which addressed permitted use types, the concept plan, performance, landscaping, and buffers, and construction deadlines. So again, this proposed rezoning would be an extension of that facility, right? They're just trying to move some of that use across the street on this property. We define a construction yard as established housing facilities of businesses primarily engaged in construction activities, including outside storage of materials and equipment. It's the outside storage of equipment that classifies this as a construction yard. There will be no storage of materials at this site. They have plenty of room on the other property, but this is just really for vehicles and trailers. It is permitted by right in the I2 district. There is one standard. It doesn't really apply in this case, but if they had materials that they were storing, it would have to be screened for anything from a residential use that's within 100 feet of the property. And there isn't a residential use within 100 feet. So the concept plan, this is in your packet, they show roughly, I think, an 18,000 square foot building that's being proposed for the property. They also have a gravel storage lot. And so there's three kind of canopies, and we'll kind of show those drawings, for some other equipment. And so there's, to the upper right-hand side, there's a gravel storage area. That'll have two of the canopies. The building will have, I think, six bays on both sides of garage doors on both sides. And mainly, I think, that's to be able to drive through, you know, from the circulation, to be able to pick up equipment, hook up, and drive through at the end of the day and store that equipment. The little parking lot to the south of the building, there'll be another canopy that's over that as well. It'll be completely fenced. I think the eight-foot total fence height will be, it'll be chain link with three barbed wires at the top. Stormwater management will be handled by underground retention as well as a small pond to the bottom of the drawing. That's where the stormwater management pond will be located. Again, the purpose of the facility is to warehouse mobile transformer equipment and other large equipment utilized by AEP Transmission, Construction, and Service Crew in the region. So only, the building will only be occupied as the equipment is being picked up in the morning. They go out to the site, do whatever, come back in the day, and put it back into the garage or on the yard. There is a, one of the bays, or two of the bays, I think, may be used also for maintenance of equipment. So that might be used as part of the, during the use of the building, but that will be when they have to do those type of, the type of work. Buffer, since the adjacent property, C2, to the left, which is the Allstate Building, and they're being rezoned to I2, there is a Type B buffer that's required along the western property line. So there's two different options that they could have. One's a 30-foot buffer with no fencing, or one's a 20-foot buffer with fencing and landscaping. Since they're putting up landscaping, it'll probably be that Type 2 option that they will utilize. Move on to some other drawings. And these are just close-ups of underground detention and stormwater pond in the building. Storage area that will have some additional canopies. There's kind of a rendering of that bigger building with the six garage bays. Again, I think there'll be the same on the other side, so it's straight through on both sides. They'll have garage doors. And then different parking canopies that they'll have for the equipment as well. So A and B are in that gravel area. Parking canopy C is what's behind the building, or to the south of the building. Existing zoning across the street is I2C, which is the AEP facility. To the east and south, you hit Interstate 81, so there's really no zoning in place. To the west, you have the C2 zoning of the Allstate Building. This is currently zoned C2. Future land use is Core, which is our highest intensity kind of commercial district. So it is technically, this use is an industrial use and would not be consistent with the general Core. So while the proposed rezoning is not consistent with the Core future land use designation, the existing facility across Lock Haven Drive is also designated Core. And so again, this is an expansion of that use. Public hearing, the planning commission held a public hearing on February 6th. There was one citizen, James Cowan, who spoke during the public hearing. He's an attorney who was representing the people that owned the Allstate property next door. So on behalf of his client, he expressed strong opposition to the rezoning with concerns including inconsistency with the Roanoke County Conference Plan, visual impact, interrupted view sheds, lack of desired restrictions on the submitted concept plan, bay doors facing the office building, insufficient screening, and the availability of other industrial zone property available for the intended use. He noted that the owners of 1745 Lock Haven Drive made a large investment in the property, and they believe the development of the site as a construction yard will deter prospective tenants of that building. Believe has, included in your packet is his letter that he submitted to the planning commission, so you have that as well. So the planning commission discussed the use and operation of the construction yard, the building orientation, the building heights, whether materials would be stored on-site, and no, only equipment will be stored on-site, no construction materials, lighting, fencing, proffered conditions, views from the adjacent office building. They also talked about buffers, the existing AEP facility across the street, and what uses would be allowed by C2, and you may potentially get a higher intensity use adjacent to the Allstate Building. So the planning commission did recommend approval of this application to rezone the 3.255 acres from C2 to I2 High-Intensity Commercial with three proffered conditions that was offered by the applicant. First one is that the site shall be developed in general performance with the concept plan for AEP Mobile Transformer, Roanoke, Virginia, prepared by Hurt &amp; Profit dated February 13, 2024. Any change required through the site, comprehensive site plan review process. So this site plan was amended after the planning commission. And the only thing that was changed, obviously the date changed, the only thing that changed was there was a reference on the original about the height being 16 feet of the building, and it's not going to be 16 feet. So they submitted a revised concept plan, which is in your packet, that will have, that has that height that, I believe, 20 feet?
25.
25 feet is the medicine height. So, and that was the only revision made to, since they had a revised concept plan, they updated the proffered condition with that date. Two and three are still the same. So the Type B landscape buffer adjacent to the western property line shall consist of two rows of large evergreen trees, which will be eight feet in height above the ground when planted, in place of the deciduous trees and evergreen shelves that are required as part of the Type B buffer, and that the Type B landscape buffer screening requirement adjacent to the western property line shall be constructed of opaque vinyl material. So they'll put some vinyl slats along that western property, or in the fence along the western property line. With that, I'll take any questions you have.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions for staff. Mr. Thompson, I was, when I was reviewing the packet and, and looking at page 216, which is very similar to your slide 17, you don't need to bring it back up, but it just shows that on the north side of Lock Haven Drive, it's all purple. It's all I2C. And so this portion that's before us tonight is just wanting to change that proposed lot to match what's across the street.
Correct.
My question is, how long has APCO been across the street? I know that they've had some of that, it's been legacy, and then they've continued to add buildings and, and uses inside that area. But I wonder if you knew, because they've been there a substantial time.
Yeah, '87 was when the rezoning took place. So imagine it's shortly around that timeframe.
Okay.
So it was before our current zoning ordinance. So it's been a while, 30 something years.
Okay.
Thirty-seven years, I guess. So it's been there for a while. The Allstate Building was built in 2016. They purchased this property, the property they currently have, they purchased in 2021. So it's been three years that AEP's owned the property.
Right. I was looking through the, the site plan, and it's been proffered.
Correct.
So with the proffer of the site plan, does that restrict them from other industrial uses?
Yes.
So they couldn't bring in anything else? It has to conform to what is laid out on the plan as it is? Or they would need to come back to us?
Correct.
With another rezoning and hearing. And then my other question is, let's see, I heard you mention 16 feet. I had made a note about 16 feet, but now I'm hearing 25.
On the original plan, it showed a height of 16 feet, but then there was some conversation. And so they have resubmitted the revised concept plan, which is in the packet that you all have, which shows those heights of 25 feet.
And so the, the main building, the main storage facility with the six garages, garage doors on each side, that one is the 25-foot?
Correct.
And the canopies are 16. Is that accurate?
Canopies are 20.
Okay, so I'll.
Canopies are 20.
Thank you.
Any one with something somewhere in there?
I think that's all I have for staff at this time.
Sure. Anyone else? At this point, we'll recognize any representatives of the petitioners to speak. You'll state your name and who you represent.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and staff. I'm Teresa Hall. I'm here on behalf of Appalachian Power and Operating Company under American Electric Power. I'm joined by my colleague, Rob Mann, who works in our real estate department, as well as a couple of representatives with Hurt &amp; Profit. We're here this evening to ask for support for the company's petition to rezone the Lock Haven property. The land, as Philip noted, will be used to store large equipment that's known as mobile transformers. This equipment is vital to the company's ability to provide safe and electrical, safe and reliable electricity for customers. Mobile transformers are factory-built, they're tested, and then delivered to us completely assembled. They allow us to perform maintenance on our facilities without interrupting power for customers. The layout of this property is ideal for this purpose. It is not too steep or too hilly to support the safe entry and exit of the trucks and the transformers at that site. In terms of traffic impact, there will be a few vehicles each day that come in in the morning and leave at the end of the day, but it's on an as-needed basis. There could be days where you wouldn't even have traffic there. Appalachian Power's parent company, AEP, owns other property near the John Vaughn Center, but it is not well-suited for the purpose of housing mobile transformers. This property that we already own, that is also on the site, is simply too hilly and steep for this purpose. The property for which we are requesting the rezoning is adjacent to what we refer to as the John Vaughn Property. This site is home to much of the region's transmission and distribution operations, and many of our employees work there. At this location, we maintenance equipment, tools, and vehicles, and store supplies. We continue to invest in this location. Construction of a new transmission storeroom at the John Vaughn location is underway now, and we recently celebrated completion of the company's new Distribution Service Center, all are at this site. This location is a vital part of the company's operations and critical to the company's ability to continue to provide safe and reliable power for our customers. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board. At this time, I'll turn the podium over to Brian, who is with Hurt &amp; Profit, if you have any additional questions for me or for him.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, sir. If you tell us your name and who you represent.
My name is Brian Cosman. I'm with Hurt &amp; Profit, the engineering representing AEP on this project. And really, I'm here, I can answer any of the technical questions or specific site issues or any other details that you all may have on the site.
I do. I have a laundry list of, of questions. And if you want me to just start from the top, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
You're right ahead.
And some of them, I, I feel like I even know what's going on, but I really want it for the public record. And so I appreciate you listening, answering the questions that I've got. So, so what will happen to the existing structures? And what is that timeline on this parcel? I know that there is an old home, used to be, I think, Wing IT, and they took professional pictures for the schools. And, and that hasn't been in use, I guess, since you all purchased it in '21. And so what is, what's going to happen to that property? How quickly will this turn over?
So those will eventually be demolished. We, I'm not sure if we have done it yet. We are under contract to do the asbestos-led mold testing on the facility before we do the demolition to make sure it's safe. We would need to submit these site plans for full county approval, and that's going to take some time. Right now, it's anticipated it'll be spring of 2025 before really any construction work is going to start on that site.
Okay. So I noticed that on the fencing, which is probably standard to protect your equipment, that it's eight feet high, chain link, there's going to be some vinyl strips to help hide the equipment beyond. But then there's also three rows of barbed wire, as I understand. And, and I, I just wanted you to speak to that because that is a pretty harsh look. And how necessary is that barbed wire?
Do you want to answer that, since it's more of an AEP?
Right. It is part of our physical security standards that we have this type of fencing. However, if it's the board's wish, we could work with, with you to put in a fencing that is higher, that would still serve the purpose, but would be perhaps more presentable and, and higher in height.
And so what would be, what would that option look like?
I have not seen what it would look like, but it's my understanding that it's more pleasing to the eye to have that type of fencing.
It would essentially be the same chain link fence without the barbed wire.
Okay, it would just be a taller.
It'd be a taller fence.
Okay. I personally think that that would be a great thing to do. It, it, I think it would help the aesthetics there. I would be in favor of that. And if I may continue, Mr. Chairman, I've got several others. So there's going to be some outside lighting on that parcel, and I was just checking to make sure it was going to be downlit.
It is, and that's just, that's part of this site plan approval process where they're reviewing that.
Perfect. Perfect. And then the roofing material and the, and the colors of the roofing material from your neighbor, they'll be able to, they'll be looking straight down on top of those buildings. And I was just curious about what your schematics, that you thought those would look like.
The typical of what's been done on that type of building has been just a metal seam roof. And I believe the color is a white, is there a standard white roof?
A white roof. And, and the garage doors, I know at some point I'm asking about the garage door color also.
Same, they'd be the same white.
Okay, okay. And is this siding? I know that there would be some kind of siding on the garage. The, the other shelters don't have siding. They don't have walls, or do they?
I believe one or two of the, I believe the two in the gravel yard might have a, a rear wall to them.
Okay.
Again, that would probably just be a metal, metal wall.
Metal siding?
Yes.
And would it be white, or would it look metallic? Or do you know at this point?
I don't know that we know that, but I know on other AEP projects we've done, they've got standard colored templates they've used in the buildings.
I think what I was trying to avoid was like the, you know, mini warehouse look.
So the main building is going to be block for the, the bottom portion of the building because there, as was mentioned, one of the bays in that building will be, it could be storage or it could be a maintenance.
Sure.
So part of that maintenance would be some wash down. So because of the water in there, that we, the lower course of that building will be block building. So it'd be, I believe, I believe it is a split face block on the, the lower portion of the building.
Excellent, excellent, okay. And then some kind of metal siding, and we're not positive about the color. It's either metallic or...
It'll be a metal siding on the top. And my, what I believe... And my, what I believe is it's going to match the new buildings that were just installed across the street, just to keep it consistent with the campus.
Great, I like that, that's good. Okay. Will there be equipment storage outside of the storage building and the canopies? Will, on some of the, some of the paved area especially, is what I'm concerned about, on the western side of the lot? Will there be outside storage that's not under a canopy?
No, because what we did with the site is we used some modeling software and based on the trailer sizes and the type of vehicles that we're pulling them, we modeled the movements within the site to get the building as big as we can get it for the vehicles to still be able to do those movements. So there's really no room on that site to store anything other than within the building or underneath those canopies in the gravel area.
That's excellent, that's very good. I'm pleased to hear that. So just speak to the stormwater management. I understand that there's underground stormwater management, but there's also a pond. Will there have to be any kind of fencing or additional work around that?
There's not any additional fencing inside the site for the pond.
Good, good. But there is underground, and then there is a detention pond.
Yes, just because the site's not large enough for the pond size required.
Sure, very good. And Mr. Chairman, that's all I have at this time.
Okay. Anyone else got questions?
Just a comment. So in the construction world, I deal with AEP. And some of our stuff has gotten stolen since COVID, because it's got a supply and demand. So I would understand why you need security and high fence. And the barbed wire sometimes seems excessive, but it works. So just letting you all know from my perspective that.
Thank you. I have a question. So I visualize trailers, low bid trailers with the transformers already on it, and that's what you're storing there. So how many of those are you going to have that are inside? And how many are going to be undercover? Do you have an idea at any one time?
We had, there are.
Looked like you had four bays.
Six.
Six.
Well, there are six bays, but it could be up to fourteen.
Yeah, in that one building.
Correct, just because some of them were full length of the building, and then others were, you could pull them in from either side that were shorter. And then it appears there's about fourteen spaces under the canopy within the gravel area.
So about the one?
Just the, the other canopy that was closer to the building was really just for the personnel vehicles that would be there if someone was inside the building.
So I visualize this, as no one might go in there for three or four days. If there's a transformer blows out somewhere, someone will go there, hook it up to a truck, take it to the site that's needed, and there you go.
That's correct.
What do you do with the transformers that blow up somewhere? Do you bring them back to the site?
I don't believe so.
Okay. All right, so this is a pretty simple staging operation, is what I see it as. That may not have a lot of activity at any particular time during the day, and then again, may wouldn't need it, as the emergency dictates. Okay, that's the only question I have. Do you have some other questions, Ms. Hooker?
If I could go back and ask again, going back to the fencing, I hear from my colleague that high fencing is necessary, and I believe that it is necessary to protect that equipment. But your comment intrigues me. You said that it would be potentially just a higher chain link fence. So if it's eight feet, it would just all be chain link instead of three rows of barbed wire? Is that the way I understand?
Again, I think that was up to the board. The initial intention of the application was to do the standard chain link fence with the three strands of barbed wire at the top.
With the street.
Which is the, whatever AEP's standard for fencing is, is what that was intended to be.
Sure, understood. Okay.
One more question?
Not at this time.
Okay. We have anyone to speak? Anyone signed up to speak for this? If so, I'll open the public hearing. Okay. That said, I'll close the public hearing. And at this time, is there a motion?
Yes, sir. I'm happy to make a motion. And I have been pondering this and getting others' input regarding. I went and toured the site and your neighbor's facility. And, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve. I find that the proposed rezoning request is inconsistent with the core future land use designation of the county's adopted comprehensive plan. However, the subject property is adjacent to other property-zoned, high-intensity industrial district with conditions, and the proposed use would be an extension of the current use of that adjacent property, is good zoning practice, and will not result in substantial detriment to the community. I therefore move that we approve the rezoning request as it has been requested with the following proffered conditions. Number one, the site shall be developed in general conformance with the concept plan for AEP Mobile Transformer, Roanoke, Virginia, prepared by Hurt and Profit dated December 5, 2023, subject to any changes required by the County of Roanoke, Virginia Department of Transportation or the Western Virginia Water Authority during the site plan review process. The Type B landscape buffer adjacent to the western property line shall consist of two rows of large evergreen trees, eight feet in height above ground when planted, in place of the deciduous trees and evergreen shrubs. The Type B landscape buffer screening requirement adjacent to the western property line shall be constructed of an opaque vinyl material. I further move that the draft ordinance that was prepared and included in our board packet be approved and adopted, including the provision that the audio portion of today's hearing that pertains to this matter be transcribed and attached to the ordinance as an integral exhibit, demonstrating that the board fully considered arguments both for and against the rezoning request, including but not limited to the arguments shared and discussed during today's meeting.
Ms. Hooker, if I may.
Yes.
When I prepared the sample motion, we had not yet received the substituted concept plan. So there is a different date. I apologize that I had overlooked that. So under the first motion to approve under number one, the date of the concept plan should be February 13 instead of December 5.
Thank you for catching that.
I apologize for that oversight.
No problem. Thank you for catching that. February 13, 2023. Twenty-four, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, you made the motion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
I would like to take a moment to ask Peter Lu back a question.
Yes, of course.
I have just realized, not knowing that AEP would be bringing Rob Mann with them, and he is a realtor in my office. Therefore, I need to know, even though I would not be receiving any money or benefit that I'm aware of, if I should abstain from this voting and motion, so that there is no impropriety or.
And that is a very wise question, Ms. Shepherd. I commend you for asking it. There would be no violation under a reading of the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act. So legally, you may vote. However, if you do perceive, if you do desire to avoid any appearance of impropriety, you could certainly take that into consideration and abstain from the vote. So this would really be your decision on what you feel best about. Again, there would be no violation of law if you did decide to vote either for or against. But if you desire to avoid any appearance of impropriety, you may decide to abstain.
I feel that I would like to abstain.
Very good.
Mr. North? Vote. Continuing the voting.
Yes.
Okay, we'll call the roll.
Just do it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So we're going on to item two. We're going to take a, we're going to take a brief three- to five-minute break. Thank you.
Okay.
Patricia Sink to rezonate approximately 5.545 acres from AG3 Agricultural Rural Preserve Reserve District to AV Agricultural Village Center District located in 3455 Fitzrode-Benton Magisterial District. Chair recognizes Philip Thompson, Director of Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. As you stated, Mrs. Sink wants to rezone her property. The main purpose of this is to be able to subdivide a lot off of her property and sell it with the, with the house on it. This property is located off of Fitzrode. It's right up against Ballyhack Golf Course, across from the Parkway. That's what the green road is there in the picture. A little under six acres, 5.5. There's a single-family house that's on the property. She wants to rezone it to be able to subdivide off the house along with some land, retain the remainder of the property as well. So, a couple photos, here's a picture of the house. Couple photos that kind of show how they, looking towards Ballyhack Golf Course. Has a little bit of topography that drops off to the rear of the property. Again, you can see it, this is probably the best view of what that profile looks like as far as topography dropping off. This is the adjacent house that's behind. I think it's her son owns this, this house as well. This is family subdivision. So a little bit of history. So in 2017, there were three lots that made up this property and an adjacent property. And so they're trying to, in essence, go back to that original subdivision. So there were seven acres that was originally part of all of this, and it was combined and then created into two lots. So what they're trying to, what she's trying to do is basically resubdivide off the existing house with some land on it, and then retain the remainder of that property. So, part of the issue with AG3, you need not only three acres for the lot you create, but retain three acres for what remains. That's six acres. She doesn't have six acres, she has 5.5. So, under, in the AV District, the minimum lot size is 25,000 square feet for a lot, and eighty-five feet of public road frontage. So that's why she's trying to do that, to be able to get to that, be able to subdivide that lot off as small as possible. It's zoned AG3, which is Agricultural Rural Preserve. To the north is also AG3 and AR, Agricultural Residential. To the east is PRD, that's the Ballyhack Golf Course and Development. To the west is AG3, AR, and Agricultural Village. And then to the south is PRD, which is Ballyhack, AR, and AG3. Property is designated as development, which allows for where new residential development's going to take place. So it is consistent with the future land use designation of development. Plan Commission did hold a public hearing on February 6th. There were no citizens who spoke. The applicant explained her desire to subdivide in order to sell the home while retaining the majority of the land. She stated that her intention is for her son, who resides at an adjacent parcel, inherit the remaining land that is not sold with the home, and she expressed her desire to sell only a small portion of the land with the existing home. Plan Commission recommends approval of the request to rezonate the 5.5 acres from AG3 to AV. Think any questions you have?
Okay, thank you. Any board members have any questions? Mr. Mahoney?
Several, Mr. Thompson. So if the applicant had retained what she had in 2017, we wouldn't be doing this today, correct?
Correct.
If they, if this is approved, I, I know you haven't seen any subdivision application, but would this pass subdivision ordinance review?
Yes.
Okay. And I gather with the intention to have the son inherit, we're probably looking at another family subdivision down the road?
So, let me back up. So I, I do believe, no. So the original three, so there were three parcels that were, that were combined in 2017. So, three parcels, and then what happened was, the 5.5 acre parcel was created of that seven acres. And then there was a family subdivision for her son, who, of the one and a half acre, right? So her son lives adjacent to her. So right now, it's, was part of that original division back in 2017. I think the intent is that you will create two legal lots with what of the 5.5 acres, right? Because there's enough road frontage in the 5.5 acres, so you're going to create, out of that 5.5, there would be two legal lots created, right? Doesn't matter, and then, I think the intent is that the house with the land, is the intent is to sell that, whatever remains of the 5.5 acres, let's say it's 4.5 acres in this example, at some point, I think it's intent that her son would have it. Now whether he combines that with the existing lot or not, I don't know. That's a future action. But the intention is through the rezoning, she could create two legal lots for sale as part of this, whoever owns it, in the future.
I guess I was just suspicious that, it started to look to me like this is a subterfuge to get around the Roanoke County subdivision ordinance. That's all.
Yeah, no. Again, the two lots that would be created would meet the requirements of subdivision ordinance and the zoning district.
But in 2017, they had three legal lots.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
I've got a question I'd like to ask, Mr. Chairman. In 2017, there were three legal lots, or were there one lot that was subdivided into two?
No, there were three legal lots.
So now there are two legal lots.
Right. There's a, one was created through a family subdivision.
Right.
And one is the remaining 5.5 acres. So yeah, there's one and a half acres, that's a family subdivision, which is legal, which her son lives out, and then the other one's the five and a half acres.
Why were they subdivided in 2017? Out of curiosity.
I don't know. My guess is it was, or why were they combined into two versus the three?
Yeah, well, you had said that in 2017, there were three lots.
Right.
That were combined into...
I, I don't know why, but you maybe don't answer that question.
Okay, okay.
I don't know why that was the intent back in 2017.
Okay. All right, that's all I've...
Any more questions?
Well, it looks like on the drawing from 2017, that they built a house on new lot two, and the existing brick house will now be engulfed into the new.
Right.
Into the new AV. And so you have two lots. They are, it's a pretty lot, wow. Phew, man. Love to have those developed. It's sweet. That family is going to be nice. That son's going to give him a nice piece of property. That's nice.
Thank you. At this time, if there's no further board questions, I'll invite any representatives with the petitioners to speak. Does anyone here to speak? If so, would you please state your name and address? Thank you. Welcome. You want to, you can pull the microphone down, so there you go. That's good.
Okay, my name's Patricia Sink, and I reside at 3431 Fitzrode, next door to 3455. I had wanted to, I have been renting this house for like 20 some years, and I'm tired of it. And I'm thinking I want to get rid of it. So, when I approached surveyors, they let me know that I couldn't do this, that with the, under the current zoning, that I would have to sell the majority of the land with the house, and I would like to keep the majority of the land. And if and when I sell the house, I've not completely made up my mind yet, but when I sell it, I would just like to sell a portion of that, because, and I don't plan to sell any of the rest of the land. I don't plan to make a subdivision, I guess it's already a subdivision, but likely it will be inherited by my son, who lives next, you know, with that property. And my intent is to resubdivide to allow for the sale of the house and just immediate legal acreage surrounding the house, if this is approved.
Okay, thank you.
So, any questions?
Do you have any questions from the petition?
No.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. At this time, since there's no questions for the petitioner, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have anyone to speak? Okay, there are no one to speak, then we will close the public hearing. Is there a motion on the item two?
I would like to make a motion, and I find that the proposed rezoning request is consistent with the purpose and intent of the county's adopted comprehensive plan, is good zoning practice, and will not result in any substantial detriment to the community. I therefore move that we approve the rezoning request as it has been requested.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
No.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to item K, Citizens' Comments and Communications. Are there any citizens waiting to address the board that have not submitted a form? No one else? Okay. With that said, we'll move on to item L, Reports and Inquiries of Board Members. Ms. Hooker?
Just a couple of items. Mr. North, I want to congratulate the Glenver High School boys swim team for, they are state champions. We're going to be having some guests come to join us soon.
Really?
Yes. Glenver High School did it again. I'd also like to just acknowledge and express my appreciation to staff for walking with me on the Riverside Greenway. We walked from the new parking lot on Riverside Drive to approximately Mill Lane on the construction path for the new Greenway, and it's very exciting. It's a beautiful walk. It was a very muddy walk the day that we did it. It's amazing with some of the engineering work that they're doing beside a very steep slope, and really look forward to that project being completed. And that's all for now. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mahoney?
Two items, Mr. Chairman. On Monday, February 19th, Mr. North and I met with Roanoke County's representative to the Roanoke Regional Airport Commission, and they brought us up to, brought us information with respect to what the airport is doing and some of the activities that are involved with that. Mr. North and I tried to do that on a fairly routine basis, just to maintain contact with our appointees on that commission. The second item I'd like to talk about is, this weekend at my home, I received a copy of the Roanoke Magazine, and it's the woman's issue. It, it's a magazine that identified some of the leading women in our community, and I want to mention to the board members that our own Amy Whitaker is mentioned prominently in that magazine. So I want to congratulate her. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Good news. Mr. Radford?
Well, since I have a cold and half hearing, I'll give you a, a story. I recently traveled out to Denver this past weekend, and I wasn't sick, now I am. Got to see my granddaughter, but I, I made some comparisons of Roanoke County to Denver. And one of the things while we were out there, we went to one of their public provided gyms. It's very similar to the Green Ridge Rec Center. And they, their facility is a little older than our Green Ridge Rec Center, but they do, they do the same thing in the, in the city of Denver. They, they provide aquatic centers. I know we were talking about, I came across our, our plate a couple months ago about an aquatic center. But they have aquatic center, they have a setup very similar to Green Ridge Rec Center. I was very, very impressed with it. Highly used because it's, it's core, it's right in the city. And I also found out while you're there, you either own a Tesla or a Subaru. And it's very tight parking in Denver. Our, two of our kids live in Denver, so I'll be able to share more stories in the years to come about Denver, but it's quite a town, and, but I came away, you know, Roanoke has got a lot of the same stuff. We got more land, we got, our mountains are a little shorter than the Rockies, but it's, I was just so happy to fly back in, into Roanoke with a cold. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I'm glad to hear that you utilized the Blacksburg-Roanoke Regional Airport.
I did. I fly at ROA.
Thank you.
Yes.
Keep that up. Ms. Shepherd?
Well, the only thing I've got to share are two items. One is, I was able to meet with Megan Cronice this week and find out about the Carson Road project, that they are having a hearing on March the 7th at Bon Sac Elementary School. And I'm really excited for the changes that they're looking to make and expand Carson Road area to be, I guess I would say, safer to drive around, as I utilize that road all the time, and it'll be a great, a great addition to get that done. The other thing that I did this week was met with the Town of Benton Mayor Brad Gross and Pete Peters, along with Phil, and who else did we have? One other person, right?
Mr. Kaywood?
Yes, sorry. Richard Kaywood.
That guy over there.
I'm sorry. And that, that was a great meeting as well, learning the different things like they're going to do, as I call it the old country's, Holdren's, country store, as long, as well as the progress of the hotel being built in Benton. So I can't wait to, you know, hear what's going to happen with all of this.
It was a good meeting.
Yes, it was. So, sorry, Richard.
Just a... She didn't mean that. Anyhow, yeah, well, I'm going to try to go to that Carson Road meeting too, that's at Bon Sac, Tammy, because they had discussions like that last year. Anyway, I used to take that road to and from work downtown because 460 was so bad early in the morning when I'd go to work, so you really got to be awake and have a lot of coffee in your system to take that winding road, so hopefully they'll have some improvements.
Yes, you do. And now we're getting ready to have roundabouts on it potentially, so that'll be nice.
On the airport, they're going to want to meet, I think I told you that, Madeline, so they want to come give us an update sometime later this year, June, May-June timeframe. Peters Creek Road, Williamson Road, Multimodal Safety Improvements, there'll be a meeting at Holland's Library, March 18th, from 5:00 to 7:00. VDOT's done a study of the whole corridor there, from 5581 to, from Peters Creek to Plantation and Williamson, and they're going to share some scenarios and seek citizen input on what they like the best. And then we go to the next step, which is to decide how we want to go about funding, whether it's a whole pie or just certain parts of the pie. But I will tell you this, several of the intersections have a high accident rate, which was higher than I had thought. So this is definitely a safety-minded effort. And that's all I have tonight. And at this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. We stand adjourned.